2020 to order, could you please all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Thank you.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic which stands with nations, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. Mr. Priest, we're debating on who was gonna read it if you couldn't make it, so you're here now.
My streak, so I'm unbroken. Although, if my internet connection fails during my reading, please let me know. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 38, Section 20, and the governor's March 15th 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place, public hearing of the town of Burlington borders leftman is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of the members of the public will be permitted, but the public can listen and/or review this meeting while in progress as broadcast on BCAT government cable access television, BCAT government coverage Facebook Live page, or by using those provided in the agenda for our WebEx Cisco online meeting, or via phone at 408-418-9388, meeting number 1796962024. Members of the public attending this meeting virtually will be allowed to make comments if they wish to do so during the portion of the hearing designated for public comment, like commenting on the BCAT government coverage Facebook Live page function on the WebEx virtual meeting, or via telephone 701635. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So, we get started right away, Mr. Sagorino. I believe it's you now, sir. You're on mute, Paul.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Selectmen Priest will be monitoring the comments on Facebook Live and WebEx Chat, and I will monitor the phone line at 781-270-1635. Just as a reminder to the board, all votes are required to be done by roll call for virtual meetings. The first agenda item, Mr. Chairman, we have Chief Kent and Deputy Chief Brown here for some appointments within our police department. Chief Kent?
Thank you. We're kind of, as I'm sure you well noticed, we're kind of seeing the changing of the guard the last few months at BPD. We had four new patrolmen start Monday morning, they graduated from the academy Friday, and I would appreciate it. It's nothing too, recommendation to be appointed special officers to you tonight that are retiring. Before I do that, I do want to mention, he's not gonna become a special police officer, but Detective Tom Fornier is retiring January 7th. He's been a mainstay in the school system, particularly the high school, and has just done a tremendous job down there, not only dealing with student issues, but with school safety. He's gonna be a big loss to the department. We wish Tom well in his retirement. First special recommendation I would like to make is Spiros Singos, who was appointed patrolman in November of 1985. He's carried badge one, which is the senior patrolman, for several years. Spiros is one of those guys who, I don't think I've ever seen him had a bad day. Always got a positive attitude, a kind word. He's a mainstay on the day shift, and, you know, he's gonna be missed. However, we're glad he will be staying on as a special police officer up on your vote tonight. With that said, I would like to recommend Spiros Singos be appointed special police officer effective January 3rd, 2021. Mr. Sagorino?
Congratulations to Spiros on a well-deserved retirement. And with the chief's recommendation, I appoint Spiros Singos to the position of special police officer in the Burlington Police Department, and ask that the board waives its 15-day waiting period.
Do I have a motion? Mike raises hand, do I have a second?
Second.
Both motion to the second. All right, gentlemen, we have to go in order now. So, Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Roll call vote, please. Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Tigas?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda, yes, me. Gentlemen, any comments about Spiros before we move on to the next one? We've all been blessed by dealing with this gentleman over the years. He's gonna be a loss to the town of Burlington, but he'll be happy to be out here and doing his little thing every three or four days. So, Spiros, thank you so much for everything you've done for this town. It's great to see you go. I like beeping at you when I drive by. Mike, anything?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, yeah. Unlike Officer Houston, who worked the night shift, we really had an opportunity to see him. Spiros was preliminary on the daytime shift, and I had the good fortune of responding to numerous calls with him over the course of my career. And I want to thank him for his service to the town, and I wish him nothing but the best in his retirement.
Mr. Tigas, you worked with him, so?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I did. No, to reiterate what the chief said, I also don't think I've ever seen Spiros get mad or get angry. He's just a very calm, you know, well-demeaned person, and he'll make a great special officer out there, and nothing bad at all. Sam, a great guy, and like you said, he will be missed, and I want to thank him for his years of service as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, it seems, you know, a consistent, you know, place we find ourselves in when someone retires, that we lament the loss very greatly, you know, and it just goes to show the staple of, and the caliber of, you know, folks we have working here in Burlington. Obviously, I wish Spiros the best in retirement, and look forward to seeing him up there putting up a detail here now and again. So, best luck.
Thank you. Mr. Hogan?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, all three of these gentlemen tonight are gonna be missed, not only by the community in general, but all of us that have worked with them over the years. So, I wish them all great luck, and just as I tell everybody, retirement really is everything it's cracked up to be. So, congratulations, and thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sagorino?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll turn it over to Chief Kent again.
The second request is for Officer William Soda. Of course, his father was a longtime chief of the department. Prior to getting hired by the police department, Bill was a US Marine. He was appointed as a permanent intermittent in 1992, and since 2011, he's been in charge of our IT department, keeping all our computers up and running, which isn't easy when you have a hand that falls like me trying to run the computers. Billy is always there, day or night, if something happens with the computers. If I'm on a weekend, can't log in from home at 4:30 in the morning on a Sunday, I text him, and he's got it up running by 4:35. He's been a real asset to the department. Our IT system runs very smoothly thanks to him, and he's gonna be missed also. So, I would recommend William Soda be appointed special police officer effective 1/12/2021. Mr. Sagorino?
Again, congratulations to Bill on a well-deserved retirement. And with the chief's recommendation, I appoint William Soda to the position of special police officer in the Burlington Police Department, and ask that the board waives its 15-day waiting period.
Do I have a motion? Michael, do I have a second? Jimmy, we're gonna go roll call vote, and I think we'll have a problem with Mr. Priest in a second. Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Tigas?
Yes.
Mr. Priest? Nick, you there?
Yeah, can you hear me?
I can hear you now, yes, sir. We're on a roll call vote.
That's a yes, for me.
Okay, so it's a yes? It's already a yes. So, 5-0-0. Jimmy, we'll start with you. Would you like to say anything about Mr. Soda?
Again, with the chief said, Bill has special talents when it comes to IT, when it comes to law enforcement. The records management system is very unique. It's not like a typical computer system. There are a lot of oddities about it, but Bill knows those oddities inside and out. And just real quick, again, thank him for his service. But I just want to make a note, too, that even though these officers like myself retire, and we become specials, what that means is, if these officers work in details, we have that many more trained officers out on the streets at any particular moment of the day. And I know this came to fruition when we had an incident at the Francis Wyman School where armed carjackers were running across the field. All the detail officers left, you know, secured their area, and then responded. So, you have extra manpower out in the streets. And I just want to make, you know, people aware that these are full-time, trained officers that are in addition and above and beyond your ordinary competence. So, it just adds that little extra layer of protection for the town.
Thank you, Jimmy. Mr. Hogan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I often do not try to correct the chief, but if you ever ask a Marine, they're still Marines, they're not former Marines. But Jimmy and, I mean, the retiree and his father both wore the Globe and Anchor from the Marine Corps, and I know in the family, they're all very proud. So, I thank him again.
Thank you. Mr. Runyon?
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, you know, actually, before Bill went over to the police department, he spent a little time over at the fire department with us as our mechanic. So, I got to know Bill pretty well for a few years before he left us. But again, thank you, Bill, for your service, and best wishes in your retirement. I'm sure we'll cross paths in the future.
Mr. Priest?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Obviously, I give my best wishes to Bill, and, you know, thank him for his years of service. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Soda, congratulations on your retirement. This just means you'll be traveling a lot more with the wrestling children in your life. Your two boys have done a great job, and that comes from you and your wife. So, congratulations on your retirement, and the best of luck to you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, chief. Once again, it was a pleasure.
And Bob was right, and I knew that when I said it. Shame on me. So, thank you, Bob, for correcting me.
And be ready for a ticket.
The one and only time.
All right. Mr. Sagorino?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next agenda item, we have some promotions within the fire department. Chief Patterson is here. I'm not sure if I can see Assistant Chief Conaty in the room or not, but at this point, I will turn it over to Chief Patterson. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. This is kind of a bittersweet moment for me over at the fire department. We have one pending retirement, and Captain Kevin Brown will be retiring at the end of, or the beginning of January. However, that creates opportunities for two other members of our department. So, tonight, we're looking to gain approval for a captain's position and a lieutenant's position. First, before I get to that, I'd like to acknowledge Captain Kevin Brown. Kevin was appointed to the Burlington Fire Department in March of 1986. He came to us through Salem, New Hampshire, where he was a firefighter up in Salem, New Hampshire. Kevin quickly promoted to lieutenant in January of 1990. He promoted to captain in February of 1993. He served as a shift commander for both Group Four and Group Two. He also served as the department's training officer for a period of time. At the date of his retirement, Captain Kevin Brown will have served our community for nearly 35 years. I mean, to sum it up, Kevin has just been a true fire service leader. His blunt knowledge, experience, inability, ransom is one of our department's most respected officers. I would say he is the most respected officer. He's been a mentor to all that have worked with him, including myself. We wish Captain Kevin Brown a happy and healthy retirement. Now, for my recommendation for appointment for captain. Lieutenant James Brown has been a member of the Burlington Fire Department since April of 1997. He was promoted to lieutenant in April of 2003. He has served as our fire department's fire prevention lieutenant on two occasions. He currently serves as a senior lieutenant of Group Four. As a senior lieutenant, Lieutenant Brown has experience working as a shift commander. I believe Jim's 17 years of experience as lieutenant has no doubt prepared him for this promotion. Jim earned his bachelor of science degree in business administration from Framingham State College. He earned his associate's degree in fire service from Middlesex Community College. He's currently a fire officer one certified, as well as a fire inspector one certified. Jimmy will be replacing his brother Kevin as shift commander. Jim's brother, Tim Brown, is also a captain of the Burlington Fire Department. A third brother, Thomas, is currently the deputy police chief in Burlington. Also, his sister-in-law is Anne Marie Brown, a detective with our police department. I personally believe it's quite an accomplishment that the three Brown brothers obtained the position of fire captain within our department. Like I said, what quite of accomplishment. I recommend Lieutenant James Brown to be promoted to the position of fire captain effective the week of January 10th, 2021.
Thank you, chief. We're, I'm sure we'll all get something to say about this right now. So, we'll do a roll call vote first on this, and, yes, Mr. Sagorino?
I saw.
You have to do your diligence, right?
Thank you.
Yeah, I was getting there. I'm sorry. Go ahead. I'll let you go first. I'll go afterwards.
Sure. And just so I can throw it in there, congratulations to Kevin Brown. Tremendous guy. I've had an opportunity to interact with him quite a bit over the years, and he will be missed. But with the chief's recommendation, I wish to appoint James Brown to the position of captain in the Burlington Fire Department, and ask that the board waives its 15-day waiting period.
Do I have a motion? Mr. Tigas, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. We'll go on a roll call vote. Mr. Hogan?
Yeah, absolutely.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Tigas?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Miranda, yes. Thank you. Okay, gentlemen, congratulations, Mr. Brown. But I'm gonna let the guys go first, and I'm gonna actually go last. So, Mike, you worked with him. Why don't you go first?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate that, and I'm thrilled for Jim Brown, as, you know, a lot of folks know that police and fire service tend to be a family affair thing, and Chief Patterson did a good job pointing that out in the case of Jim Brown. So, I've had the good pleasure of working alongside and working for Jim Brown for 17 years. It has, Jim has always been well-liked and well-respected in the department, and I'm certain that Jim's gonna do an outstanding job for the town of Burlington. I know he's got his family with him tonight, and they must be so very proud. So, Jim, congratulations.
Thank you. Mr. Hogan, go right ahead, sir.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. As Michael says, it's interesting that it runs in families, and I've said more than a few times that my wife's from a big fire family with members in several departments in the area of north and northeast of Boston. And I congratulate Jim for the promotion, and I congratulate Kevin for the retirement, and for the entire family. It's interesting that when you work with the town, as Michael and Jim and I have done over the years, you get to work with all of these people in some form and fashion, and it's just absolutely fabulous that these people are being promoted. And it's a shame that more people can't get promoted, but there are only so many slots. But the quality of people we have in both of our departments is just outstanding.
Thank you. Mr. Tigas?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Kevin, congratulations on your upcoming retirement. It is what everybody says it is. Jimmy, congratulations on your promotion, and I want to thank you guys for your years of service. I want to thank the entire Brown family for, I think by the names that were listed tonight, that's like 150 years of service to the town of Burlington. Not many towns can say that. You guys are really part of Burlington, and you're part of our community. And again, thank you for all your individual service and your service to the town as a family.
Thank you. Mr. Priest?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll keep this brief, because between children and my Wi-Fi, I don't trust anything tonight. But obviously, a massive congratulations all around, you know, Kevin on your retirement, Jimmy on the promotion, huge congratulations. You know, it's been said by the rest of the board here tonight, you know, but, you know, the community is just a huge part of who we are here in Burlington, and it shows. You know, so just congratulations to all, and this is wonderful to hear.
Thank you. James, congratulations. I think it's wonderful that we all get to sit here and say congratulations to the Brown family, basically is what we're doing tonight. You know, your family has been in this town forever. You've done a great job, all your brothers, family members between the police department, the fire department. I'm gonna say this once again, I say it every single time, it's all about the upbringing, my friend. Your parents did a fantastic job bringing yous all up, and I can see in the background earlier tonight, you had your daughter working on your computer for you. You had your wife standing there. I can see Mike, who's coming up next, Mr. McLaughlin. I can see him sitting there with his family waiting. So, that's what it's all about. It's all about the families in town, and all I can say is congratulations on your appointment, and congratulations to your brother on his retirement. But I am gonna get on one second before we leave here. I've got a couple things Betty sent me. Debbie Patterson said, congratulations, Captain Kevin Brown, on your retirement. You will be missed by the BFD. Kathy Hofferty, congratulations, Captain Brown. So, just a couple that we got. I'm sure there's a couple more out there that I didn't get yet. So, gentlemen, congratulations on both end of it. Jim, would you like to say a few things before we move on to the next one?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just like to, first of all, congratulate Kevin. He's been a great mentor. Hope he has a long, happy, healthy retirement. Chief Patterson, thank you for the appointment. Mr. Sagorino, Board of Selectmen, I look forward to the next challenge. Think I'm ready, and it's gonna be fun. I'm looking forward to it. I thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you, chief. Okay, Paul, bring it back to you.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Chief Patterson, we got one more up here.
Thank you, Paul. So, with the promotion of Jimmy Brown to captain, that creates a vacancy in the lieutenant ranks. So, tonight, I'd like to fill that vacancy. Michael McLaughlin was appointed a Burlington firefighter in July of 2005. He's currently assigned as acting lieutenant with Group One. He has 15 years of firefighting experience, which no doubt will prepare him for this upcoming promotion. Michael earned his master's of business degree from Riviera University. He earned his bachelor's degree in business administration from the University of Massachusetts Lowell. He is currently a firefighter one-two certified. In his second life, Mike is currently employed as a senior technical support engineer at Cronos, which is out of Lowell, Mass, where he manages nine team members. Michael, like many of us, is a second-generation Burlington firefighter. His father, Paul McLaughlin, served the town of Burlington for 27 years and retired in 2002. I recommend Acting Lieutenant Michael McLaughlin to be promoted to the position of lieutenant effective the week of January 10th, 2021.
Thank you, chief. Mr. Sagorino?
With the chief's recommendation, I appoint Michael McLaughlin to the position of lieutenant in the Burlington Fire Department, and ask that the board waives its 15-day waiting period.
Motion by Mr. Runyon, second by Mr. Tigas. Okay, gentlemen, we got a roll call vote once again. Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Tigas?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay, gentlemen. Michael, once again, you worked with him.
Okay, thank you, sir. Michael, congratulations. I had the privilege of working alongside you on Group One for just about your entire 15 years with the department. I also had the good fortune to work with your dad for a few years, so.
Damn.
Congratulations on your promotion, Michael. I'm sure you're gonna do a great job. I've already heard some good things from your role as acting lieutenant in the last few months. So, I see you got a couple of the kids with you tonight. I'm sure they're very proud of you, and again, congratulations.
Thank you. Mr., I just called on you. Mr. Tigas?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mike, congratulations. I didn't get to work side by side with you like Mr. Runyon did, but I know we've been to, you know, calls at the same time. But again, just another example of the fine leadership of the fire department. Chief Patterson, again, a great choice, and Lieutenant McLaughlin, congratulations.
Thank you. Mr. Hogan?
Yeah, Mike, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Michael, congratulations. These promotions within town are always done with the best interest of the department at hand, and in this case, it's the exact same thing. So, Michael, congratulations, and we look forward to the wonderful things you're gonna be doing with this appointment moving forward.
Thank you. Mr. Priest?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Doing these things remotely is, I think, one of the lousiest things about this whole pandemic, for sure. And I know you're all nodding your head, so we're on the same page. It's a little less fun for everybody. But, you know, I think it goes without saying that, you know, the caliber of a person plus hard work and dedication equals great things. And we're very fortunate, once again, you know, in Burlington to see that here, and you, Michael. So, congratulations, and we look forward to your long career here in town.
Thank you. Michael, it's my turn. Congratulations. I think it's gonna be a wonderful fit for you and the fire department. I'd like to commend Chief Patterson on the two appointments that he did make tonight, the two very, very qualified candidates. I do love seeing family members. I see the Christmas in the background. I see the two kids sitting there with you. I think that's just above and beyond to bring the family into it. So, congratulations, all the best, and I can't believe that Mike worked with you and your father. I have to ask him how old he is when this is over, because I guess I really don't know how old Mike really is. So, I won't do it on public TV or whatever this thing's called. But anyway, Michael, congratulations, wish you all the best. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like to say any words to?
I'd just like to thank the board. I'd like to thank Chief Patterson. I'd like to congratulate Captain Kevin Brown on his retirement. I congratulate Jim Brown on his promotion. Mike Runyon, thanks for the kind words, and really looking forward to that next step. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, gentlemen, thank you very much. Now, the screens are gonna go half gone, because all the Browns are gonna be missing now. What's gonna happen? There'll be like four of us left here now. All right, gentlemen, have a great night. Thank you. Thank you, chief.
Thank you all again. Thank you.
Thank you.
And if we were in the room, we'd have to wait 20 minutes for everyone to walk out now. I do miss that.
Yeah, that's one of the things that's missed a lot.
Absolutely. Sagorino?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next agenda item is a new mission statement for the housing partnership. The town's housing partnership has updated their mission statement for the committee. Selectmen Runyon is very active with this committee at this point. You know, I'd like to turn it over to him to tell you what the committee's been working on.
Thank you. Mr. Runyon?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Paul. Just a- Yeah, thank, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Paul. Um, ju- just a, a, a quick history on the, uh, Housing Partnership Committee. Um, some 25, 30 years ago, the town had a couple of large 40B developments, um, pending in, in town here, the Arboretum and Stonebrook. Um, I think we, we were sort of caught a little bit flat footed at the time and, uh, in, in recent, you know, uh, the town, we really didn't have any skin in the game to, to, uh, negotiate with these developers. So, um, uh, sort of a, uh, the Selectmen at the time sort of hastily established, uh, the Housing Partnership Committee and, um, there's very little, uh, records, uh, on file anywhere. I checked with Amy and we've checked with, uh, Dan McCormick, our archivist. Um, so, uh, recently, uh, the committee has, um, um, we've been looking at some, some, some other things that we could, uh, do in the community and we realized that we, we really lacked structure, uh, for the committee. And so this is an attempt to sort of, um, the housekeeping, if you will, to sort of give us some, some, some guidance. Um, something that, um, you know, we can refer to and, um, you know, continue our, our potential good deeds, uh, that, that we, uh, would, would like to pursue. Uh, one of them, for example, is we'd, we'd like to have a, a one-stop shopping type of, um, uh, webpage, if you will. Currently, um, you know, someone looking for affordable housing in town is, uh, directed in, in numerous different directions. Uh, you, you may, you, it might have to go to the Housing Authority. Um, you may have to drive yourself down to Kimball Towers to apply for apartment. Uh, the Selectman's Office, we accept some of the applications. So, uh, we have some things on our radar, but this mission statement is, um, what you have before you is, uh, our first document that we wanted to, um, present to you for your consideration.
I'll set, Mike, thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Uh, Paul, we'll go back to you. Um.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, now we just, we made up, made up, appointed the Selectmen would want to, uh, provide a vote on this, uh, seeing that they were part of the, the, the setup of the committee back, back in the day, so.
Okay, so my, my paperwork says update. We gotta, um, it doesn't say anything about a vote. We, we taking a vote on? Or we gotta wait for some paperwork to come in? I'm kind of lost right now, to be honest with you.
Uh, Paul, if I, if I could, um, the, the Housing Partnership Committee is a, an advisory committee to the Board of Selectmen. So we would, we would be seeking your approval on the mission statement.
Okay. Did, uh, any comments on this, Mr. Priest?
Uh, no comments from me. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Tigges?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, no, I just think it's, uh, the, the document is, is sort of outdated or old and you can't find the records. I think this is the great first step in trying to, uh, regiment the, the, the Housing, uh, Partnership. So, Mike, I think it's a great, uh, first step and, uh, just let me know what you need and I'll be there and, and try to help if I can.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Hogan?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, yeah, Michael, I, I support this statement. I do have one question, not about the statement, but, uh, where, where are we with the 10%?
Well, we're, we're comfortably over the 10%. Um, in, in fact, uh, if we were to count all of the units, because many of them, many of the, uh, programs, the local initiative programs that we have in the town, Grandview, um, the military housing on South Bedford. Uh, for example, though, none of those are counted in our official D H C D, uh, inventory. But we are, uh, well above the 10%. I think we're at 13 or 14% with the addition of, uh, Corporate Drive recently.
Oh, that's fantastic. Bob, did I?
All right, thank, thank you, Michael. No, not yet. Uh, that, that's great work. So thank you for that.
Okay. Um, so we have a motion on the article that was put in front of us?
Uh, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, mission statement, uh, provided in your backup.
Second by, uh, Jimmy. Both of you just had your hand up there for real quick. Uh, we'll go on a roll call vote. Uh, Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Tigges?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda, yes. So five zero zero in favor. Great. Nice job, Michael. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Sagorino?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, we're just at, looking for a vote here to Selectman, set the Selectman's meeting schedule for 2021. Uh, what we tried to do is mirror the schedule that we've been using for the past several years. Um, if we approve it tonight and the board members have some conflicts later on, uh, later on in the, in the year, we can always change it. So it's not permanent. Uh, we just wanted to sort of, uh, put it in place so that we can, uh, get, get things ready for next year.
Great. Thank you. Uh, gentlemen, did you all have a chance to look at that, uh, in your backups with the, uh, the dates and so forth? Uh, any comments? Well, any comments at all, Mr. Hogan?
No, I'm good with it.
Okay, Mr. Priest?
No, looks good to me.
Mr. Tigges?
No, I'm good with it.
Mr. Runyon?
No, sir.
Okay, so if I can get a motion on this, we'll move right along.
We'll make a motion that we approve, uh, the schedule for 2021 as, uh, provided the backup.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Mr. Priest, second by Mr. Tigges. A roll call vote once again, gentlemen. Uh, Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Tigges?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda, yes. So five zero zero for our approval of, uh, meeting schedules. Okay. Mr. Sagorino, we have a couple of, uh, alcohol things coming up now.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman. Uh, we have, uh, three public hearings coming up in a row. So, um, I know you know the procedure, uh, but we'll need to, uh, open up the public hearing.
So, uh, the first one will be, uh, Del Frisco's?
Del Frisco's.
The public hearing was never closed, so that's still open, right?
Correct.
Right, okay. So does so is there anybody out there in the public that would like to speak on this or, uh, would you like to go over the fact that, of what they're doing? We all know what they're doing. Would you, would, would, they're gonna get back the license apparently, then apply for it? No? Yeah? Betty?
Yeah, this is a Del Frisco, uh, license. And Del Frisco's is, um, Mr. Andrew Upton.
Yep.
Yes, Attorney Andrew Upton is here. If he would like, if he'd like to speak, attorney?
Uh, yes. Hello, members of the board. Andrew Upton, uh, for the Devlin Law Offices representing Del Frisco's. Um, I just have a brief update. Uh, we are working with the landlord's broker to try to get someone to sublease this space. Uh, you know, the only way we can get out alive financially is to get someone in there. Uh, and the only way we can get someone in there is if it still has a liquor license attached. Uh, the biggest problem is no one's really opening new restaurants now. Del Frisco's is closed in Newton. Um, but we are working with, uh, the corporate real estate broker. He did tell us that, uh, they're actively marketing it. So far, they have had what he describes as one single low-ball offer, which they rejected. Uh, but he believes the market will perk up, uh, once health and safety issues are addressed in the town and the state and nationwide. Uh, and he estimates by April, there should be more people looking and we're hopeful that that's, that is true.
Thank you, um, Andrew. Listen, I just want to apologize real quickly. I, I had a piece of paper covering, covering the Del Frisco's and I was going right to Boston Beer Works. So I apologize for that, um, comment I made about giving that license back. That was a hundred percent on me.
No problem, Mr. Chairman.
I have recently moved a piece of paper and I'm where I'm supposed to be now. So, sorry, guys. Um, is there any comment on this? Uh, we'll start with, uh, uh, Mr. Priest?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I know that, you know, um, we find ourselves in a very difficult situation and, uh, that, uh, we have been, uh, doing our, our best to, uh, you know, allow these continuations and, um, I, I do agree with Mr. Upton. Hopefully, you know, by, by the springtime, uh, health and safety will begin to normalize and, uh, things will be, start to re- return to normal. But, um, no, no questions. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hogan?
Yeah, just one quick question and it has nothing to do with, uh, you know, supporting the work that they're doing. Um, is this license, uh, absolutely, um, connected to the building and the restaurant location? Or if someone wanted to buy the license separate, would they be able to?
Andrew, I believe that's.
Is that, is that a question for me or, or for the town manager?
Yes, no, to you.
Uh, I believe, I believe someone could buy the license and transfer to another location. Uh, although I'm not a hundred percent certain, but the issue with us.
I'm not gonna hold you to it.
Okay, yeah, the issue with us is we're in a very, very expensive lease and one of the, the carrots to try to get someone to sublease from us is the availability of a license that's been approved at that location. Obviously, the board has determined there's a public need for a license in that space and that would be an incentive for a tenant to take the sublease. Without that, it would be significantly harder for us to, uh, unload the space on a sublease and then obviously harder for the landlord as well.
All right, yeah, no, I'm, I'm not trying to throw a wrench into anything. I'm just asking.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Uh, Mr. Runyon?
Uh, no questions, Mr. Chairman. I'm, I'm presuming we will continue the public hearing to a later date?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Tigges?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Upton, uh, I know that we would, I'm speaking for myself. I'm sure, uh, the other members of the board, uh, somewhat feel like I do. We want to do whatever we can to, uh, keep the restaurant business alive in Burlington. That's a great location. It's a, uh, for a restaurant, it was, it's a great building, uh, both in and out. Um, it was one of my favorite restaurants before it closed. And, um, so whatever we can do on the town side, and I don't want to throw, uh, you know, our, our economic developer, Melissa's been fantastic and she might be the contact person, but whatever we can do to help, uh, get someone there, just, uh, don't hesitate to reach out. That's all.
I appreciate that. Thank you. I mean, I, I really feel our, our interests are aligned with those of the town. Uh, everyone would like to have a responsible, successful restaurant in there. It would be great for the town and it would be great for us, uh, because we could get out of this, this oppressive lease.
Okay, thank you, Andrew. So, um, what we're gonna try to do, Andrew, I guess, is move this to March 22nd. Are you okay with that at 6:30?
Yep, that would be fine.
Okay, so I need a motion made, uh, to move this to March 22nd at 6:30?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion that we move, uh, we, we continue this, this hearing, uh, for the Del Frisco's. So I'll just pull up real quick so I can say it right. Uh, for the, uh, uh, Alcohol Del Frisco's Grill Masters LLC doing business as Del Frisco's Grill, uh, to March 22nd at 6:30 or later.
Thank you. I have a second on that. You can get your hand up. Okay, roll call vote, Mr. Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Or Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Tigges?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Myself, yes. So five zeros are ready to move this to March 22nd at 6:30. Okay.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for the update. Uh, Mr. Sagorino?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, next up, we have a public hearing for the alcohol license of Slesser Brothers Brewing Company, Inc. Uh, this is the Burlington Beer Works, uh, property. Um, on this particular license, uh, we did receive a letter, uh, from their attorney. Uh, you all know Paul Sporn, uh, indicating that they were not going to be renewing their license for this year. Uh, so this has sort of been a long, uh, situation that we've been dealing with on this license. It's finally coming to an end. Uh, we do have a motion, a, a correct motion that Town Council would like us to use as we, as we revoke this this evening. And hopefully, uh, one of you has that in the packet. You'll be able to read that.
Um, who has that in the package?
I have that in front of me, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, sir.
Chairman, may I, may I, may I?
Absolutely, Betty.
Can we just ask if someone here from the public, I'm not sure if someone is here from Burlington Beer Works, where it is a public hearing, if you should have some comments?
I didn't, okay. All right, we're gonna have, um, we'll have, uh, Mr. Hogan read it first and then we'll go right to whoever wants to speak on it and then we'll close the public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Betty. So go ahead, Mr. Hogan.
So do we want to do the motion first, Mr. Chairman?
Um, you, you could have read that, um, article Mr. Sagorino just talked about. And then we'll, then we'll go back into the, the public hearing.
Okay, the, the motion, "As Burlington Beer Works informed the Board of Selectmen that they would not be renewing their General Law Chapter 138, Section 12 License for 2021, and as the renewal application and fee were not received during the required month of November of 2020, License Number 00011-RS-0160 will revert back to the town effective January 1st, 2021, and any subsequent attempts to retrieve the license will be treated as an application for a new license in accordance with General Law Chapter 138, Section 16A."
Is that the end? Those things can be so long. I didn't know if you were finished or catching your breath.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, so we're gonna, we'll still keep that before we take a motion. This is a public hearing. So, um, who, who was out there that would like to speak on this? Betty, did you say there was someone out there?
I just wanted to confirm, um, Mr. Chairman, that there is nobody present who would like to.
Oh, okay. Oh, I'm sorry. I misunderstood. I thought you said there was. Is there anybody that would like to speak on this? Mr. Runyon?
Thanks, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, just one thought before we close the, uh, chapter, chapter on this license there. Um, the, the Plaza where that, the, the restaurant is located, the restaurant in question is located. Um, to, to, for them to be successful, it, it's my opinion that they would need a li- a license down there, a restaurant with a license down there. So my question is to the board and the town administrator tonight is, could we possibly set that license aside for a period of time exclusively for that address?
That, that location, Mr. Chairman, has been in negotiation with another business. Beside of Burlington Beer Works, Burlington Beer Works.
All right, thank you, Betty. Mr. Sagorino?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the property owner is aware that the license, um, is being, was not being renewed and is being revoked. So they are aware of it. Um, as to your question as to whether we can set it aside or not, I, I'm guessing not. I think it goes back into the general pool. Uh, but that's something that we can check out with the A B C C tomorrow, or we can check that out with Town Council to see uh, what options, if any, the board may have in, in regards to that.
Okay, Mike? Yes, okay. So at this point, I'm gonna take a motion, uh, to close the public hearing.
Okay, they can probably see me.
Motion by Mike, second by?
I'll second.
Mr. Priest. So this, this is on closing the public hearing. Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Tigges?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda, yes. So the public hearing is closed. Now I'm gonna look for a motion on the article that, um, Mr. Hogan just read.
That, Mr. Chairman, that was the motion, so we'll need a second.
Okay, that was the motion. I'm sorry.
I see Mr. Hogan's, uh, motion.
Okay, motion is made in a second and we'll go through a public hearing, I'm in public. All right, slow down, Joe. We're going, Mr. Hogan?
Yes, to accept the, the, the license back.
You're starting to sound like me. Uh, Mr. Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Tigges?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda, yes. Okay, that one's done. 22 years later, it's finally off the table. All right, Mr. Sagorino, back to you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next up, we have a continued public hearing, uh, about the Pecito Restaurants Burlington LLC liquor license. And I do believe, uh, that we have Attorney Vaughn possibly here for an update. He did provide us a letter. Um, they do have a tenant. Uh, they'll be coming to the board shortly after, uh, the, the change in the year for Foggo de Chao. Um, I think the concept was explained to us, uh, the last time Attorney Vaughn was here. Um, but that is the. Um, but that is the update, so they, they're looking to transfer that license, uh, shortly after the beginning of the new year. And again, uh, I thought I saw Attorney Vaughn in here earlier, so, um, if he's here and would like to speak on it, uh, he's welcome to.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. For the record, Attorney Mark Vaughn with Reimer Bronstein. Um, I think that Mr. Sagorino correctly summarized where we were, that, and I did submit a letter for the record today on that. Uh, that, you know, Simon and, uh, a restaurant called Fogo de Chao, which is a Brazilian steakhouse, have signed a lease agreement to locate at the Burlington Mall. Um, just given, you know, recent events in terms of the pandemic and the result of the impact that that's had on the restaurant industry, uh, the timing has certainly, um, uh, been moved a little bit for that. But, um, based upon my communications with Fogo de Chao today, they're planning on opening, uh, sometime in 2021, probably the latter part of 2021. Uh, but their attorney indicated to me that they would be looking to submit a transfer sometime after the, after the new year. So, uh, just want to let you know, things are moving forward, uh, albeit a little bit slower than we would have liked, but, um, it's happening, so, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we'll go with some questions. Mr. Hogan, anything?
Yeah, thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Vaughn, I, I, I know there's not a lot of information that you can give out until things are officially done. Uh, but, um, the Basido license, if I'm not mistaken, uh, is a general townwide license. Um, uh, i- is that gonna be, uh, transferred into the mall? Or is the mall gonna be used one of their, um, uh, many licenses that they have for them?
The, the intention, um, through the chair to Mr. Hogan is that the, the Basido license would, would stay at the Burlington Mall for a, a, a new tenant. Um, and again, th- they are looking to not lose liquor licenses that they have there. Their, their vision for the mall continues to be, you know, once we're back to normal, which we hopefully will be soon, uh, with the vaccines and everything. But the, the hope is that, uh, and the plan is that the variety of restaurants that they were talking about before are still moving forward. Um, there's, um, a number of restaurants that, uh, have been approved by the planning board that, uh, the pause button was hit on in terms of construction. But they were not looking to lose any liquor licenses down there. Uh, so, I'm not sure I'm answering your question, but the intent would be to keep the Basido license at the mall, um, in addition to the, the site-specific licenses, which we were, uh, looking to use for the, these other new restaurants that are planning to come in.
Alright, I'm gonna have to think on that. Uh, I, I'm not happy with tying up a general town license, um, for all the licenses that the mall has. Um, and then lose one for the town, just to have another nineteenth or twentieth restaurant in the mall.
Well, I, you, you have no, I respect your opinion, Mr. Hogan. I mean, certainly, I don't think we're looking at that number of restaurants. Um, and I just would ask for your consideration of the fact that, uh, I don't, I don't think there was ever an intention to, um, have the site-specific licenses and then lose some of the, the ones that are there today. It was to be able to, um, you know, combine them to have a, um, you know, it's, it's a large property. Um, there's, you know, a number of buildings there and, you know, I, I, I think, you know, Macy's, um, you know, owns their real estate there and that, that's part of the, the whole orbit as well. But, um, happy to talk about it further.
Okay, and then just as a reminder, I mean, the town's a large town and we need to have licenses in other places also. So, we'll talk about it later, but I just wanted to ask that question.
Sure. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Priest, any comments?
Uh, no, none, none at this time, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Runyon?
None at this time.
Mr. Tigges?
Uh, nothing right now, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Alright, so, uh, we're looking to move this meeting to March 22nd at 6:35. Um, is that, uh, okay with you, Mr. Vaughn?
That's fine, yes, thank you.
Okay, great. Okay, so I need a motion. Oh, Mr. Sagorino, yes?
Uh, just a question, Mr. Chairman, you know, um, does the timing of this continuance gonna affect, uh, Mark, your, your transfer request for the license? And how might us, the date that we choose, impact that?
Um, meaning-
In other words, if you're looking to come in in January-
Yeah, yeah.
And we have this hearing scheduled for March.
Yeah, that's a fair comment. Um, is there a, um, is there a February meeting that might make sense to put it on?
Yes, for sure.
Okay.
Does Betty have that or Paul do you have that?
Yeah, thank you. It's February 8th or February 22nd.
Which one works, Mark? Better for you? Eighth or the 22nd?
Uh, why, why don't we go with the eighth and, you know, by then, hopefully, we would have a better handle on, we either would have applied or we'll have a, a better handle on the timing to, to update you.
And we'll go at six, 6:30 for that, Betty?
Yes, that sounds fine.
Paul, okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sagorino. So, I, I need a motion for February 8th at 6:30.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a, a motion that we, uh, move the public hearing to February 8th at 6:30 regarding, uh, the Basido license.
Thank you, I have a second?
Second.
Both of you at the same time. Mr. Priest? So now we're gonna, um, so we'll leave the public hearing open. We're gonna go from there and just vote on the, uh, moving of the meeting, continuation. Um, Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Tigges?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda, yes. So five zero zero in favor, moving to February 8th at 6:30. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Sagorino, you're back up again.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the next agenda item, uh, involves the board, a request for the board to approve the 2021 annual licenses, uh, fees that have, have been received in a timely manner. Um, all the inspections were conducted by staff as requested. Uh, there were no issues to report. Um, our staff in the office would like to remind restaurants to have all staff serving alcohol registered with the Burlington Police Department. Turn it back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Um, gentlemen, this is all renewal licenses. Uh, we do this every year, so what I'm gonna do is, I believe you all have it in front of you, uh, and I'm gonna just go down the list. If you say "hold," I'll hold that off and we'll talk about it. If not, we're gonna vote them in as one. You okay with that, guys? Okay, ready? Uh, alcohol, amusement, auto class one, auto class two, cafeteria, entertainment, in holder, livery, theater. Here's that word, Paul, I already messed it up twice already, particular. We don't know what it was, but we figured it out. Where? We're not holding anything. Am I right, gentlemen? Jimmy, you're on speaker? I, I mean, you're on, on mute. I got your hand up.
I do have a quick, uh, procedural question.
Yes.
Burlington Beer Works is listed as, in the material, how do we approve it? Um, so that we can include the license, but, um, that, uh, do we eliminate their name? I'm just trying to make sure that we do it procedurally so that we don't mess up that license.
I can answer that if you like.
Go ahead, Betty.
What we're doing tonight, Jim, is we are approving all the applications that have been submitted for renewal. Yes, Burlington Beer Works does not have an application. They did not renew, they did not pay the fee. So they will not be, uh, that, and we can make that as part of the motion as well, if you'd like.
Okay. Okay with that?
Thank you. Yes.
So, we're at the point, we're gonna, uh, roll call vote for this. No one held their hand up, that was the only question we had. So I need a motion and a second and then we'll move on from there. Motion by Mike, second by Mr. Priest, good job.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, now we'll go through the roll call vote, Mr. Hogan.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, and I just want to acknowledge all the work that our staff and, uh, uh, the other departments involved in this are to, to get all of this done. This, this is a massive undertaking every year, so I, I commend them and thank them for the work they've done on this.
Thank you, Bob. Uh, Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Tigges?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda, yes. Another five zero zero. Thank you. Okay, uh, Mr. Sagorino, you're up, kid.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, we just, on this past Friday, the warrant article deadline, uh, passed. And so what we have for tonight is a request for the board, uh, to add all the, um, warrant articles that were received to date, uh, onto the warrant for the January town meeting. I apologize, I, I see, I think Dr. Weiner is here in the meeting, as well as, um, Eileen Coleman from the Conservation Department. Um, the board will take a position on the articles later on at the January meeting, um, prior to town meeting. So tonight's, uh, agenda item was simply, uh, to add these articles onto the warrant. I know, in case you were here to speak on them.
Thank you, Mr. Sagorino. Uh, Mr. Weiner, it was, hi, you're on mute?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
How are you, sir?
Very, very busy. There's this thing called COVID-19 going on, which keeps me and the, every member of the board and its professionals extremely busy.
Yes, I'm sure you guys are straight up. Uh, a quick question. Uh, besides, we could all sit here for an hour and tell you what a great job everybody's doing. Uh-
Thank you.
Your staff has, your staff has been incredible during this process, so, uh, we'll commend you for that. But, um, assuming you were here for the warrant article.
I wanted to see what was going on. I spoke to, uh, Mr. Byer today-
Yeah.
About, specifically about the number that was added, and it says $120,000. Apparently, the board received, uh, misinformation. What it should be is for $40,000 for this year, which we, which would be then rolled into a full salary for the following year if approved. So the number is incorrect, as I, I, I learned today from our moderator.
Okay, well, that's good to know. Thank you for, uh, enlightening us on that aspect of it. Um, does anybody else have a comment on this? We'll start with Mr. Hogan.
Um, I, I, I just want, uh, good evening, Ed, how are you doing? Um, I, I just want to clarify what, um, Paul just said. We're, we're not taking testimony for individual things, we're just voting on the whole warrant as, of the thirteen items, accepting them. Is that correct, Paul?
Yes, sir.
Yes, yes, select, that's correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I heard that correctly, thank you.
I, I'm just trust that you all have our backup and I invite you all to, uh, call me whenever you have a opportunity. I know I have called, putting calls to a number of you and I know you've been busy too.
Should we reach you at, um, at the Board of Health or would you like to give out your cell phone number online?
I don't mind giving you my cell phone number, everybody in town has it anyway.
I'm just kidding, this is the last, no, honestly, Ed, I was just fooling around. The last moment you want to give out your cell phone number?
Well, I will, I will send it to you, Mr. Miranda, and you can distribute it. But I'll tell you, my phone never stops, doesn't make any difference. I'm well beyond worrying about giving out my phone number.
Uh, I can imagine, I can imagine. But anyway, um, we'll go back to the, um, articles of January warrant. Uh, gentlemen, are you okay with these? Uh, any comments at all, just raise your hand and I'll call on you. If not, we're gonna go to a motion and a vote. Okay, no, no one's raising their hand. Uh, I need a, a motion on this, please?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion when we approve the articles for the January, uh, warrant, um, as printed, just to, for the meeting, just to get them on the agenda.
Uh, I have a second?
Second.
Okay, second. Before I go to a vote-
And that, and that is for thirteen articles. I just want to make sure we're talking about thirteen articles, correct? That's the number?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Alright, before we vote on it, Mr. Zanizio popped up, so I'm, I'm wondering if he has anything he wants to add to this? Before we go, no, he's shaking his head no? You're all set, John? Okay, now we'll go through a regular vote. Uh, Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Tigges?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda, yes. So five zero zero in favor of the articles for two, uh, uh, for the January warrant. Okay.
Thank you so much, everybody, I really appreciate it. I know you're busy too, so thank you for diligence, thank you.
Thank you. Tell Susan we said thank you.
I will.
Alright, good luck. Uh, minutes for November 16th? Anybody?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make, uh, the motion to approve the minutes for November 16th.
I'll second.
Motion made in the second, anyone want to go down the list again? Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
That was convincing, Bob. Mr. Tigges?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda, yes. Okay, uh, we'll start with subcommittee reports. Uh, we'll go with, uh, Mr. Runyon.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, thankfully, we are preparing to turn the page on 2020, a year of unprecedented challenges and pain for all of us. I would, I would like to take this opportunity to thank my colleagues, town administrator, department heads, and all of our employees for their leadership, understanding, cooperation, and willingness to deliver the level of service our residents depend on during COVID. It hasn't been easy and it hasn't necessarily been pleasant, but you delivered and I thank you. Fortunately, there is light at the end of the tunnel, but we could, but we will continue to face challenges in 2021, particularly to our budget, as many of our businesses and residents struggle with the effects of the pandemic. It will require a leadership and a willingness to make difficult decisions to guide us through. As we do each year, the town will conduct an annual election and I have decided that, uh, that I am up for that challenge and intend to be a candidate for reelection. I look forward to working hard, as I always do, for all of our residents and those who do business here. And finally, Mr. Chairman, I wish all of you and all of our residents a very Merry Christmas and a safe holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Runyon. Uh, Mr. Tigges?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mike. I, I think, I want to thank you because you pretty much said everything I wanted to say, but, um, thank you for, uh, me not having to say it. Um, we have a, a significant snowstorm coming up this, this week. Uh, all I'm gonna ask is, I, I, is to have residents, uh, be patient, because we do the best we can with clearing the roads. Um, and I know everybody thinks clearing the road is a priority, but, um, the town usually does a very good job. I don't know how we stand with subcontractors, but just, uh, you know, everybody's been very patient this year, just try to be patient, i- you know, i- if you need your street cleared or just, uh, you know, be with us. Uh, the other thing, just check on your neighbors and, uh, clear out any fire hydrants that might get impacted by snow, that's about it, and everybody just stay safe.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Hogan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, just one note, uh, we had, uh, some guests talk about the food pantry at our last meeting and, uh, this is a difficult time. Um, a lot of the things that, uh, they usually get from companies and individuals, uh, they're not getting this year and they could use some help, uh, and think about, uh, so if, if you can, think about, uh, throwing some food into one of the collection boxes that are g- are generated around town and, uh, uh, help out those who, um, need it. And we heard the numbers last time about Thanksgiving, a couple of thousand pounds of food that they had to give out. Um, and this is the time of the year when we should be thinking about it, so. Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy New Years, and, uh, we'll all talk again soon.
Thank you very much, Bob. Mr. Priest?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, a couple of quick updates. Um, ISAC had their first meeting last Monday, December 7th. Um, there was, uh, solid attendance and, uh, a very productive, uh, meeting. Uh, they're looking very much forward to, uh, seeing what they, uh, can do for us moving forward in 2021. Um, Melissa had emailed us, um, sorry, I'm just trying to pull up the email, uh, just around some, some updates that she's been working on as our economic development director. Um, she's been working, uh, very diligently, as we all know, uh, assembling, uh, temporary C9 COVID-19- uh, assembling, uh, temporary C9 COVID-19 Task Force, uh, mall road updates. Leave, uh, we received $35,000 from MHTC Tech, Technical Assistance to start community, community visioning, the mall road quarter. Uh, she's working on, uh, both website and social media strategy planning, uh, and development to, uh, help, um, reinforce and continue to grow, uh, our economic development. Uh, there is Town Center Placemaking Grant Mass Downtown Initiative that she's working on. Um, we heard last, uh, meeting about the, uh, CDBG micro business grants that were awarded, um, as well as the, um, uh, I'm sorry, that's, that's all about the same thing, so I'm just talking in circles now. Um, so yeah, so a lot, a lot of great things with regard to, uh, economic development. Um, but yeah, other than that, uh, I wish everyone a very happy holidays and happy year, and, uh, look very much forward to working with all of you here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nick, for talking in circles, I love it. So anyway, gentlemen, uh, Chairman's report, uh, I, I would like you all to take a ride down to the new building that, uh, uh, EPW is gonna be moving into soon. Uh, it's really coming along quite good. Uh, I've gotten some pictures, I stopped, like I say, tell you all the time, I, I get out at least once a week and sit up on top of the ridge there and just watch. Now I can't see anything 'cause the building's closed in. So I'll be asking, uh, Mr. Sanchez for a tour soon, very soon. Uh, Mr. Runyon, uh, what you had just said was spot on, so some of the things I was gonna say, I'm not, but I wish you all the best in your endeavor. Uh, I agree with you on times right now are very tough. Uh, I don't think it's, uh, gonna be easy for the next year, so, uh, I'm with you, Mike, I, I'm up for election also this year, so, there you go. Um, Christmas is right here, the Hanukkah's right here, so I wish everyone the best of holiday seasons. Not too much else to say, uh, except thank you and have a great holiday. Mr. Sagorino, Chairman's report, I mean, Town Administrator Report.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I just wanted to thank the employees, uh, for all their hard work to get us through this very difficult year. Uh, you know, thank our elected officials for guiding us, uh, through this process. And most of all, thank the residents for their understanding. Uh, we certainly know, uh, it's been a difficult year for you, uh, with all the rules and regulations and the way life has changed. So, uh, thank you to the residents and I hope everybody has a wonderful holiday season. And I think, you know, we've got some rocky roads ahead, but I think at the end of this, Burlington's gonna come out stronger than we were in the beginning. So, uh, thank you to everybody.
Thank you. Um, old business or new business? Nothing? Uh, citizens' time? I see two people out there that I have on my screen right now, could either one of yous like to speak on anything? I don't see any green lights going off for, um, Nick, do we have anybody? Betty, do we have anybody? That's a head shake, no, Betty?
Nothing, nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, uh, at this time, I need a, uh, motion to adjourn.
Moved. Second.
Second. Gentlemen, we have to do a roll call vote. I did get yelled at, remember? Mr. Sagorino, that one night. Uh, Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Tigas?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan? I think he already left. Bob, you out there? Nope, everyone left. It's a no, it's a yes for me, so four, zero, one, Betty, I don't know where Bob went. Gentlemen, have a great night, and thank you very much.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.